We're going to do our pledge of allegiance right now.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments, do we have anybody that would make the public comment? Now, any of our agenda items?
I just have a quick question. Did I get a copy of that financial report that's going to be discussed?
Again, Ma, I can send you a PDF of it.
Sorry, can you do that for me tomorrow?
As soon as I get it, I just don't have it. Do you have it, Victoria?
Yep.
Okay, Victoria, open it.
I'm speaking as a member of the community. I noticed that there is a change in our public comments agenda items only. And it says, as of today's date, all public comments will be in person only. Any emails received regarding curriculum concerns will be forwarded to the appropriate administrator to address. I thought we were going to have a discussion about this, but it seems like it's been decided. So I'm fine with the decision. However, if someone can't make it to a board meeting and they send in a public comment about what's going, you know, whatever happened at the board meeting and they have some strong opinions, what is the option if they can't make it to the board meeting for this resident if they want this as a public comment?
They would send it to the district clerk, else in the at Highland dash K 12 me, and indicate in your email, please have read at the public comments. I will respond with yes, okay? And then I will be forwarding to you and then by going and then wait for your direction if anything should change. But that's how, if they want it to be read during public comment and they don't feel comfortable or are not able to make it, they just need to state it in their email.
Otherwise, we will not ask them.
Correct.
We are not going to ask them. So could we, could we have that as a standard?
Yes, we have.
Could you add that in?
Yes.
What if it's full of expletives? Are we still going to read that at the com, at public comments?
I would say not. We would have to...
So there's a level of discretion that the board has, correct?
And if it's read at public comment in the beginning, obviously it has to pertain to an agenda item.
Correct.
If not, it comes at the tail end of the meeting. So that being said, if somebody specifically asks us to do that, yeah, we can, we can...
And it needs to aligns...
Yes.
Meet the guidelines just step forward.
Right, and just kind of reiterating that if it has specific names, any of that would be redacted. Or if it's a personnel thing, it's not going to be, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so if we could, if we could make that clear in agenda items only or even at the end, I don't know if we have any rules for public comments, general items?
General items.
So I would say that the same rules would apply?
Right.
Okay, so all indicated on both?
Yeah, I think we should.
Yes, okay.
But, I mean, we got to probably set a, set a limit to the size of the document.
Oh, right, right.
One page?
Right, well typically it's no more than 10 minutes.
Right.
When a speaker talks.
If you start reading it and you come to the end, that's it.
Well, no, that's fine, but, you know, again, I...
10 minutes.
Don't we want to encourage participation here at our meeting? That might be...
Some people, some people can't.
That might be to 50 individuals send in a letter, then we're going to sit here and read them. Is that what we want to do?
If that's, I think we are a public body, I would think that's their right. If they can't make reading.
I don't disagree with you, Sue, it's their right, but we're trying to encourage public participation to come to the meetings and voice their opinion so we can have that dialogue.
And sometimes it's very difficult.
A lot of people hide behind a piece of paper or that phone or whatever.
Right.
I'd rather see them here and we can have that dialogue if we need to have it.
Again, they might not be able...
And I think we're encouraging them now to...
Under extenuating circumstances, there may be a need to read.
Obviously, not everybody.
But otherwise, we could be opening up a pen or...
Why don't we, why don't we just address that bridge when we come to cross it? I think at this point, we can handle if people are submitting things and we find the line is way to, to greater or the contribution...
Becomes burdensome.
Or then, then we can address that as a board and...
It would be like for many people coming up talking about the same thing.
Exactly, so...
Yep, it would be the same thing, we would limit it.
I agree with Sue in that we should remain as open as possible and allow people to communicate.
Yep.
But if we find, if we find it's obstructing the, if the purpose is to obfuscate and not to move towards greater understanding or development, then at that point, we should intervene and...
We're still going to encourage...
Let's remedy problems as they arise.
We're still going to encourage people to sit here in the audience and, you know, join in with the public party.
Absolutely. I heard extenuating circumstances.
That is also, it's lovely to see people...
That doesn't mean because I don't want to get off my gauze. I'm not coming to your meeting, by the way.
Well, it could also mean that they're working. It could mean that they're intimidated. And I don't define that as extenuating, it's just...
It could be serving our country overseas somewhere, you know.
And I think we, I think we're a special needs child. It becomes very difficult to get away to get to something where you can.
I, I really don't want us to restrict the voice and let's not be...
Right.
We'll do the best we can and make changes as we go along if we need to.
You have to be careful. We talk about if it gets to a point that something that like for our censoring of people are writing, so I just think there's rules here about the mandatory use of remarks, name. So if it meets the guidelines, then, and once we read, then we read it. But I just think we can't sit here and censor because I mean, I, be what we agree with or disagree with, so we've got to, we're going to do it, we just do it for, you know, if all the rules, reread it, the one you read.
So Tom, just all clear, they're going to be addressed to the board clerk and she's going to critique them before they get forwarded to the board. They're not coming to us?
I was going to forward it to you as I do with agenda items.
Yeah, okay, all right. I agree, it should be...
Oh, yeah, we would want to see it.
Yes, of course.
No, I, I thought she's going to get them and read them at the board meeting, just let the individual come up and read, we're not...
It's not clear to what they're going to say ahead of time.
It's not at all, it's not the public, it's, it's a public meeting, but it's the board's meeting in public.
No, we, we will take that...
Thank you, Tom.
All right, you got your question answered. All right, at this point, we have a special presentation from Bernard Donigan Incorporated.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris DiCarlo. I'm a financial analyst with Bernard Donigan Incorporated. We're the district's municipal advisor. We advise you on the capital project financings and state aid assistance. What we have for you tonight is an update to a previous report that was presented to the board back in January of '21. We have a couple of different variables that we have now known that have changed since that report, so this is an update to that report. And essentially what this report is trying to do is give you a magnitude of what size project you potentially do with your next upcoming vote. So we'll go through a lot of assumptions and a maturity schedule and I'll open up to questions afterwards. But if I'm going too fast or too slow, feel free to stop me at any point and ask those questions. So if you'd like, you can flip open to page three of your doc, of your document in front of you and we can kind of run through some of the assumptions that are used in our analysis. So the first assumption that we always have to look at is what is our building aid ratio? So New York State pays building aid for voter-approved capital projects based on a certain percentage for each individual school district throughout the state. Here at Highland, it's 70.2%. So essentially, for every dollar that we spend on aid eligible expenses in a voter-approved capital project, we will get reimbursed at 70 cents on that dollar. The second factor that we need to look at is what is the bond percentage for the project? The scope of this project has not been defined yet and we're talking in terms of what size project could potentially be done. We're using the assumption that effectively 100% of the project would be eligible, but we're backing off 5% to be conservative. SED does have individuals at the state that will review each individual final cost report that goes in, final cost being a document that's submitted based on your project costs that gets that aid process going for the district. So we backed off 5% to be conservative. So the building aid ratio and the bond percentage, 70.2% and then the 95% for the bond percentage. We've outlined a series of dates, steps three through nine. I have a graphical timeline that's a lot easier to go through later on in the report, so we'll go through those dates in one of the following pages. For interest rates in our analysis, we've used some conservative estimates for rates, 4% for bond anticipation notes, 5% for serial bonds. Interest rates are much better than that right now. If you were to bond today, you'd probably be 1.5% to 2%. If you were to issue a note, you'd probably be around 1% for that note issuance. But just a reminder that these borrowings may not happen for several years out and a lot can change over a couple of years. So we built in some conservative interest rates into our assumptions. We're assuming the use of $1,895 of capital reserve dollars, so those are dollars that are set aside that the voters have approved for you to pursue towards future projects. They would also be voting for you to utilize those funds upon successful referendum. Any questions on that first page of assumptions so far?
Chris, real quick, the capital reserve that's using the complete amount of money into net reserve right now?
I believe it's, it's a little bit higher than that. I believe it's $1,897 and change. We rounded it down just to keep the numbers simple in the report. If you want to fully exhaust the fund for this project, then we'll update the analysis when we present to you the final report based on the actual scope that you, that you choose to go forward with. All right, the next page is a breakdown of the revenues and expenses for the project. So you can see on the left-hand side of the page, we have our capital reserves of $1,895. And then the balance of this project, $16,675,000 would be coming from the issuance of serial bonds. On the right-hand side is how that authorization could potentially be broken out. And so we've set aside $15,550,000 for construction and incidental costs. Incidental costs being any fees for architects, construction manager, bond counsel, local attorney, so any of the soft costs related to the project that, to administer the project. We've also set aside some dollars for some financial contingencies, DASNE fee, dorm authority of state in New York. So we have two options when we go to issue our bonds. We can either issue them on our own through Wall Street as a public market issuance or in certain situations, we might go to DASNE to issue those bonds. And then we've set aside some dollars for capitalized interest as well. Any questions on the revenues and expenses?
Capitalized interest?
Capitalized interest is our budgeted dollars within the project that can be used to pay down the interest in years in which building aid is not fully flowing.
Oh, okay.
So it's for, in order for building aid to flow, we have to have a certificate of substantial completion form and a final cost report on file. But the earliest we can get aid flowing is 18 months after SED approval. So if we do an issuance in year one, we'll do it on aid flowing, we might need to utilize some of those project dollars that are set aside to pay back the bank so there's not an impact on the local share. Okay? The next page is a look at the 8 million authorization. So this is the authorization that was voted on back in May of '18. At the, in the top half of the page are each of the individual SED project numbers and where we stand in terms of forms being submitted to the state for SED 139s, final cost reports and CSCs, certificates of substantial completion forms. And then the bottom half is the borrowings that we've done for the project. So in June of '20, a bond anticipation note that came due in June of '21. And then this past spring, we converted that ban into a serial bond. And you can see in the middle of that blue box, a 1.5% NIC, which is a phenomenal interest rate on a 15-year bond. Interest rate's historically low right now, so it was a great time to get that locked up into the bond. So you're paying up 1.5% on that bond, which is record lows in terms of interest rates right now. So it's a great time to issue, issue bonds. Any questions on the current project? The next page in the report is a snapshot of where we stand with our debt service and our building aid, which ultimately equates to what is our local share for building debt. So this page reads from left to right, we have all of our principal and interests in columns A and B. All of those are known. We've issued all of our bonds related to our capital projects, so those are locked in dollar amounts for the principal and interest. Column C is what is the total debt service for our outstanding debt. And then column D is a projection of building aid for all of your existing projects that aid is still flowing, and then also the $8 million project as well. So column F is the local share for your building debt. And you can see in '22 and '23, it's very steady at the $1,45,000 level, and then there's a drop-off in 2024. So about a $360,000 drop in the '24 year. Sometimes it's easier to see those types of charts in a graphic form. So this is a graph that shows what the local share is. And you can see in '23, '24, there's that drop-off in the local share. So anytime that we see a chart like that, that's potentially a good opportunity for the district to build in a new capital project at that time. This is a good-looking chart in our world. It's an opportunity for the district. Other districts are in a different situation where maybe those black lines are going up, or the bars going above the black lines. And then I would be here talking to you about how are we going to manage that local share increase? So the drop-off in the '23, '24 year. Any questions about the, the thing that service and the local share bar chart?
Just a question to that drop-off. What was, what's that in the beginning was the 15.75 for the capital or the total project? The 16.75? How, where would that bring that bar?
So that's going to be, the next slide will go through the dates that are associated with that project and when that debt make, could potentially come on. And then I'll run through a maturity schedule that is going to incorporate and blend those two together. And I have a chart further in the back that blends your existing along with the proposed.
Thank you.
Earlier in the report, it said that we had some dates set aside for some assumptions. I think this is much easier to look at than a series of words. So this page also reads from left to right. So this report is assuming a voter referendum in May of '22, so we have that purple flag in May of '22. And at which time after, if you receive a successful vote on the project, your architect would take some time, potentially five to six months to design the project and get it submitted to the state. And then we're building in a six-month cushion for, after your architect submits the plans and specs to the state to receive SED approval on it. And so once we receive, receive SED approval on the project, then we can go out and bid the project out and potentially award construction contracts and start getting shovels into the ground to get the work done. There's a pink unshaded box there. If you remember where the drop-off was, it was at '23, '24 year. So we have a, a possible borrowing in June of '23 with some principal and interest coming due in June of '24 on that bond anticipation note, at which time we would convert potentially to permanent financing, the serial bonds in June of '24 and lock in the permanent financing for the, for the project at that point in time. Any questions on the flow of dates there?
What is the FPMF, submit FPMF to SED?
So FPF is a, is, it's a facilities plan document and that's the facilities plan financials. So your architect will compile a large workbook of documents that need to go to the state for your project manager to approve. The FPF is, is the financial page of that. So really, it's just submitting the plans and specs to your project manager. Anytime you see an FP in front of a document, it's facilities planning. Anytime you see an SA, it's state aid.
Thank you.
So facilities planning approves project, state aid pays the building aid.
Tom, you were kidding, tight window. Yeah, I turned some of this stuff. And when are we expecting the building condition survey? I would hope soon, right?
Hoping by the end of this month.
The next page in the report is the maturity schedule for the project. And so this page, like the other one in the report, reads from left to right. So in column B, we have our capital reserve, which is essentially our down payment on the project. And then with the principal repayment in column C. The associated interest is in column E. So we have total debt service in column F to about $1,390 for the majority of the years in the maturity schedule. Column G is the, the building aid projection. So incorporating the debt service less the building aids coming up to what is our ultimate local share in column J. And so the project's about $360,000 average local share. And if you remember back from the, the bar chart earlier in the report, there was that $360,000 drop-off in '23, '24 year. So when we take this maturity schedule, take the blue bar from the previous slides, and then we've layered in the $16.6 million capital project. And you can see over in column H where that drop-off was in the '24 year. It's now nice and smooth, $1,45,000 all the way out to 2030. And then there's a little bit of a, a decrease there, but then there's another possible drop-off in, in the 2033 year.
So would that be the next time we look at doing a big project then?
Potentially. Yeah, and so, I mean, that would be a vote in, if the drop-off was in '33, you could be voting anytime in May, between May of '29 and up to probably even into May of '31. Some of us. And depending on how, you know, we built in a lot of conservative assumptions to our report, so if things turn out better, maybe you have an opportunity to pay down some of the debt sooner and that drop-off could be sooner. But for, for conservative purposes of building this analysis, we've, you know, right now the, the drop-off could potentially be in the, in the '33 year. But graphically seeing what that local share is, you can see it's staying nice and flat below the bar into the, into the future, out to at least 2030. And then there could be a small drop in, in those years, in the future years.
If the rate, the annual interest payment, column E, works out to be 1.5%, as you say...
That, that column J is going to look potentially a lot, much, a lot better. That bottom corner number there is going to look a lot better for you. So what that'll do is open up opportunities and options for you to restructure potentially the maturity schedule so you can pay it down sooner if you'd like to, or you could have some relief in the local share column. So there's a lot of options. The bonding's not going to take place for several years out. You know, we don't see any immediate bump in interest rates. The Fed is meeting today and tomorrow to discuss some policy. I mean, anything could happen in the next few years though, so we want to be conservative with the interest rates.
Right, no, I, I agree, but it was just like how, so it's either give the taxpayers a little relief or use the money or, or speed up the repayment to keep this local share even.
Right, you would have those options and that would be, you know, options that you would have, we could discuss with you at that time. And what it could do if you pay it down sooner, it could give you an opportunity sooner to fit in another project that's no marginal increase to the taxpayer.
Okay.
So it'd give you another opportunity to get some additional work done in your buildings without impacting the local share. We've also included in here a look at your maximum cost allowances. So the state sets a maximum cost allowance for each building in New York State that student occupy. So each of your individual buildings has a set aid ceiling based on essentially student, student capacity. The state calls them building aid units, but that's kind of an unusual way to think of occupancy in a building. But you can see, we have to do what's called a five-year lookback on any of your, your projects. So the state will take those base aid ceilings and deduct out the construction and incidental costs that you've reported on either an FPF form or a final cost report in the last five years. So you can see in 2024, those reset, but in terms of looking at this project, we're assuming April of '23 for the SED approval date. And that's the point in time in which your project manager would look back at your, at your five-year rolling aid ceiling for your maximum cost allowances. So the green highlighted numbers are the maximum cost allowances available for both construction on the top half of the page and incidentals on the bottom half of the page. But we always have to remember that incidentals include site work. So site work is work outside of, five feet outside of your building, whether that's paving, fields, items like that that are outside. They get categorized by SED in the incidental number.
Chris, a bus maintenance facility, where would that fit in incidental or on the construction end?
So if it's just a maintenance facility outside of your normal bus garage, it could potentially be non-aidable. SEDs will aid you on a bus garage if you're maintaining buses in that, in that facility, but they're in the business of aiding student-occupied buildings. So you can see on the far right column for your bus garage, we're saying eligible costs. There's not a maximum cost allowance because you have no student occupants in that building. So they'll generally aid you dollar for dollar on anything to upkeep the building, roofs, windows, HVAC. So as long as you're not going and building, I've heard the term garage mahal, so as long as you're not going crazy, they will generally aid you dollar for dollar on those, on those expenditures. Based on your building ratio.
Upgrades to this facility, not, not additions or a complete new facility?
That's a conversation you want to have with both your architect and your SED project manager. You know, we could certainly be involved in those conversations. Anytime you're building onto a building, you've got to run it by your project manager. For that type of facility, I would especially recommend running that by your project manager ahead of time. The next page behind the pink sheet is a building aid ratio chart. So this is just to take a look at what the building aid ratio has done historically. We're currently in the Build Four formula, so that's the orange bars. So right now, in the bottom, excuse me, in the bottom right is at 70.2%. It's actually estimated to go up to 71.7% next year, but to be conservative, we're using the lower of the two numbers because that is not a known number at this point. It's an estimate from the state that they will confirm that amount probably in December, January timeframe. And now we've included some additional information for you on previous voter authorizations in the white text box on, on the page, just for some background information.
So do you lock in that A ratio like when you submit the project or does it change throughout the project?
That's a great, a great question. You do lock in the formula once you receive voter approval. So we've been locked into that Build Four formula. So the rate can change annually, but the formula cannot. So your low mark is 66.2% based on how the Build Four has trended. So that's the lowest you go in this category.
What are the different rates? Do you have to select this one? How's that work? Because we're saying we're locked into the Build Four.
It's based on, based on the timing which you receive approval. So there's been, there's been four different categories in the last 20 years. Build, Build 10, where SED gave the additional 10% enhanced aid. And then they did the Build Three category, any projects approved from '06 to '09. And then since then, they've been in this Build Four category. It's not to say that they can't change it. There was actually some proposals in the legislation a couple of years back to go to a Build Five category, but that did not pass through. So this is then the formula for at least the last 10 years. And then the last page is the single page that's not attached to it that I provided to you, just to give you, in terms of some, some key dates to focus on to hit a May of '22 referendum, give everybody a second to find that. So to meet a May of twenty-two referendum, the board would have to take action adopting a secret resolution calling for the special election, adopting the wording of the proposition for the project at a March board meeting, March eighth. And then there's a forty-five to forty-nine day window from when we need to publish the first legal notice calling for the special election to the vote date. So that's what step two is. So on April twenty-fourth, the clerk would submit the text of the legal notice to your papers and getting that first publication in by March twenty-two, which hits the forty-five to forty-eight, forty-nine day window for our May seventeenth voter referendum. Step three on there is possible public information meetings. They're not, you don't have to do one, but it's a good idea to get it out in front of the community to let them know what they're voting on, what the impact potentially could be, what the scope of the project is, and let them come and ask questions. And typically you'd have your architects, C M, and financial advisor at, at that public information meeting. Step four is the voter referendum on May seventeen, two thousand twenty-two. And then upon successful voter referendum, you would adopt a bond resolution at one of your June meetings. What that bond resolution does is gives you the authority to issue debt for the project, to issue notes, bonds, any financing instruments that are in that resolution to finance the project. You wouldn't necessarily be issuing debt in June, but it's always good to get that resolution adopted as soon as possible after a successful voter referendum. To kind of summarize that, the, the maximum sized project that fits into the drop off is that sixteen point six. That doesn't necessarily mean you have to do sixteen point six, but that's the maximum based on the assumptions that we've laid out in the report. So it gives you kind of a framework for what you're looking at in terms of when you, once you start to get that scope from your, your architect for the B C S, what types of items might fit within that dollar threshold that we've, that we've set aside in this report. And then once you decide that scope, we would do another update to this based on the actual scope and give you a, a report based on the final scope that we present back to you. You know, if you're adopting in March, we would like to come to the, the January or February meeting depending on when you've identified and selected that scope. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well done, Chris, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would you prefer I speak from this side or is that the speaker's side of the room?
Oh, fine.
Okay. Well, oh, I. No, that's okay. Well, good evening, everybody, and nice to see you all again. I'd like to start tonight just by thanking our H T A and H S A staff for such a successful start to the school year. You know, we had logistical ups and downs, but overall we've been very pleased with how this school year started and, and obviously having all the students back at full capacity in the building. I'd also like to specifically recognize our main office staff, attendance office, health office staff, and then our security, Mr. Wilk as well for, you know, they've been putting out a lot of those fires that you experienced early in the year with where students are going. And, you know, we've added CCD and Rose Hill and some of those, some of those programs back to our transportation piece that we haven't run in the last few years as a result of COVID. And so, you know, answering those families' questions and being there right away for support has been, has been critical. So I'd like to specifically thank them. And then also Mrs. Samuel, who is our new assistant principal. She started September first and September first start date with students coming in September seventh is a quick turnaround to learn, learn the logistics of a building. And so she's jumped right in, she's been in classrooms, she's been doing read alouds with students, as I mentioned in the board report. And so we've been happy to have her join our team here and looking forward to a bright future with her. And really my only other add-on is we had our last round of curriculum night last night for grades two to four. And we're still getting the numbers in from participation, but we have slightly over seventy-five percent overall, which is, which is a solid number. And of the, you know, seven hundred-ish students, we had six or seven phone calls about Zoom links. So we were pleased with, you know, that kind of marginal percentage of, of tech issues. And not to be long-winded, but I did want to share one anecdote from tonight that I was sitting at home and I got home around probably five or five-thirty and Mrs. Darling got home a few minutes after and she was a little frantic because she had lost her wallet in town. She stopped to get gas, put her wallet on the car and drove off. And, and so, you know, we were a little stressed about that. And not ten minutes later, a first grade student and his grandmother came by the house with the wallet, you know, dropped it off and, and I heard the first grader say, that's Mr. Darling. I thought that was a great instance of the kindness that we see in our school community and the broader community each day, so. Any, any questions about the board, the board report?
Matt, on the enrollment, we're still running six sections in each grade level?
Uh, we have five sections in two of our grade levels, first and third grade.
First and third. So we're still kind of averaging in the low twenties at each grade, which I think is, is, is great.
Yeah.
Five years ago, Joe, we were looking at probably over eight hundred students, so that, that number was, was up. So that's, that's good.
Hey, look, we've, we've got an uptick in enrollment.
Yeah, I mean, the report, right? We gained thirty-five, lost two, not a bad.
Yes, we do, we do have students that I'm aware of that are either being homeschooled that haven't, you know, they're still submitting that paperwork. So I, I anticipate that exited number will go up slightly by the next board report. But overall, yeah, we were happy to see that, that positive increase.
We don't take those students off until they've submitted everything. So sometimes they're in the process and we know that they're home and they're not coming in, but we don't officially take them out until we have all of the plans.
I also just wanted to welcome, second my welcome to Mrs. Samuel's. I know when my daughter came home, she was so excited she had not been assistant principal on the first day. Since she was very excited, she said, Mom, she is so nice. So welcome and thank you for reaching out to all of our students.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you also.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to second Mr. Darling's statement about all of our staff of H T A or S D H S A. They did an amazing job the first couple of weeks of school so far. They're in the classrooms, they are in the halls, they're engaging students, they're making memories with them from day one, which is phenomenal. And a special shout out, I know I put in my board report to my guidance department and team. They have done an incredible job working on our schedule, making it a master schedule that's student centered, which is critical for our students. It was just amazing start to the school year as well for our scheduling, which I know was a big focus and we did a great job with that. So I'm super excited about that. I also just wanted to highlight a few of the things we've been doing to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. So in mathematics classrooms, they're doing modern art Hispanic mathematicians, which is amazing. And they're going through them, they have a huge wall display outside the math rooms, which is awesome. In our sixth grade classes, they were listening to two different songs each day from different Hispanic countries. And towards the end of October, they will be completing a March Madness type bracket to offer other grade levels their favorite types of music from the different countries that they listen to. And lastly, in the art classes, they're doing a version of the Kuna tradition of making molas, which is usually done with fabric, but they're doing, using paper instead. And it's a way to focus on their choice of an animal or geographic pattern. And I'll show a little bit of picture, they'll be done next week. And so Mrs. Ozzy's going to give me a bunch of pictures to put on the website and to post around the building. But this is kind of an idea, so you can kind of see, it's just really bright gold colors that they weave together. So that's what they're doing with that. And lastly, I want to highlight our attendance for the first two weeks of school. We have over a ninety-five percent attendance rate, which is phenomenal. Do you want to have it as well?
Megan, I, I would like to, uh, thank you, well, I, I don't know if this was a, a choice, but the corrective action plan. Thank you so much for recognizing the challenge that we have in reading. We talked about this at the last board meeting. And Mike brought up the fact that, you know, they do look at, you know, their scores academically. But I got home that night and I thought about it and lo and behold, an article in the newspaper, I think it was the New York Times, the next day, more or less stated that with the infrastructure plan, hopefully being approved, there's going to be a lot of need for contracting jobs. And Alan has always been beating on the drum in regard to this college and career readiness. And part of the article did have, did acknowledge that there is a, a skill level lacking in even, even the construction trade. And so I, I thank you so much for making this part of the forefront in making our school the mighty school it is.
Our staff were very excited about some of our new student enrichment opportunities. They're very excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to second what Sue said, like it was very, very creative instead of study hall. Doesn't actually be able to score some, some career options. So I, I wanted to, I thought it was great there.
Hopefully in future we'll have those study halls and just a lot more of those opportunities. Yes, we're excited.
Yeah, certainly like that and the electives and, you know, all these opportunities for kids. I don't know where that fits in the schedule, but the bottom line is those who have the ability have other options and that's a good thing.
Thank you.
I just had two, maybe two comments, just two highlights on. First and foremost, I know that after school, we gather all the athletes in the cafeteria, correct? And that could be, that's certainly upwards of a hundred kids. Is there a way to run those fans on the hotter days? I, I heard they're there, but they don't run them just for more aeration since they're in there. Something to consider.
Absolutely.
The other thing is after school, when you're trying to pick up your child, my understanding is the cones on the back of the school are still blocking off. You can't go around the entire building because there's cones there blocking either the backside or the front side. Can we just take a look at after-school egress of parents just trying to come pick up cars?
Absolutely. I, I don't know anything about those cones, but I can certainly talk to our security officer.
Yeah, and I can't, I don't know if it's the front or the back or both, but I, I, I hear it, they're getting jammed up in somehow.
Absolutely.
Because there is a lot of participation. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be back. Happy September.
See you, Mr. Zimmer.
I would like to echo the other principals' feelings about with gratitude for a smooth opening to the faculty, the staff, our office staff, of course, our school nurse, and of course, most importantly, our students. We had a great first couple of weeks of school here. In addition to recognize Hispanic heritage month, the following few things are happening at the high school. Multicultural club created bulletin board in the main lobby. There are Hispanic heritage announcements made during morning announcements. Social studies teachers have decorated their classrooms with posters highlighting key figures in the Hispanic American community. And Spanish teachers are celebrating the accomplishments of Hispanics in their classes throughout the month, throughout the month of September and October, of course. And finally, the attendance rate for the high school, also very good from, from the first day of school to today, the twenty-first of September. Our rate is ninety-five point five-two percent at night school, which is pretty high, especially for the first few weeks of school in a pandemic. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, directors, hopefully, um, is there, is anybody having a question of any more directly?
Reports for real information, I only jump up and jump off the page for me, so thank you all and. I'm here, all right? I just want to, most of my people are behind the scenes people, nobody sees them. They rarely get mentioned. I want to tell you that we ran the last summer, of course, the twenty-twenty summer was a difficult summer. The twenty-one, twenty, twenty-twenty-one summer was more difficult. And the custodial staff, the maintenance staff did a tremendous amount of work, short staff, we had less people than we used to do. And they did a phenomenal job and I think the buildings show it. And we were pushing out other things that impacted students. We were able to get all the fall sports fields, practice fields painted and done before the teams hit the fields, which is always an issue that when they're trying to play football on the field, it's not mine. We were able to accomplish all that stuff this year. The weather was cooperating at that point and finally we got all that done. But again, I think the custodial staff, the maintenance people have the, get some recognition for everything they did in this past summer because it was a lot. We had a lot of projects, we had no shortage of projects, and we're trying to get them all done. So I think that's, just wanted to bring that to the attention.
Thank you, thank you to them.
In addition to that, I would just like to commend our transportation department as well. Obviously, we've seen in the area, a lot of schools have issues. You know, we certainly have our first day, first week of school delays and stuff, which is expected, but thank you.
Now, we still, we still have positions we're looking to fill, right?
Yes, we still have.
We can make a public service announcement right now if anybody's looking. I want to second Heather's comment because we've seen neighboring districts that were actually forced to close and use some of their vacation days or snow days because of hired transportation, contracted, technical, unable to fulfill their contractual requirements. And yet here we are, humbled to high on maintaining it and then some.
That's where the difference comes in for district and contracting. You know, district has a lot more to offer our staff and so that's what we need to promote. And it's a good school district, but contractor, they make all the great things that the school district does.
Yeah, so.
So thank you.
Well, yeah, thank you and hopefully, you know, like Heather said, there's still hiccups, but I think we've done, we haven't heard that much backlash or, or concern. Everybody's been, so thank you for that, for your politeness especially and letting people know. I know I had, I had a concern and you got back to me so quickly and so, so kindly that it was, it was a pleasure to, to have actually spoken with you. So I appreciate that greatly. And if anybody wants to drive a bus, I think it's a good place to go.
Thank you. I guess I would be remiss if I didn't shout out to my department. We did a lot, as you can tell, in just a few short weeks. And with all their vacation time and stuff, we're really just the department of really four full timers. And we did get all the devices out to kids successfully, all the iPads out. We're running a new health desk. Parents don't even notice it's new, but it's, we put up a form there to get a little bit more clarity and to offer more assistance and a more focused map. But it's been really successful, I haven't heard any complaints. I don't think the principals have heard any complaints. Things are going okay.
Thank you. Well said. Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Last year during the pandemic, one of the strangely positive things that come out was we were recognizing that should we arrive at a situation where we had used too many snow days, that we possibly couldn't handle school remotely without consuming, you know, the, the extra days or going to extra days. Are we in a position now that we could do that, say, going forward if we have used up four or five of our snow days? We're growing concerned, are we in a position where we could snap to doing school remote?
Sure, we have all the platforms in place. Every student has a device except for the exception, some seniors didn't want our devices, but they're there if they need them. Parents are calling now for internet access if they need it. We've already have a structure built in for that and we don't, yeah, I don't, I don't see any reason why not.
So district-wide, we could prob, we would have the ability to do that within a day or two.
Correct, oh, yes, oh, yeah.
And, and we've been telling teachers from the beginning of the year that they should be prepared for that pretty much at any time. Because we're still in the middle of COVID and the pandemic, we don't really know what might happen, whether it's, you know, we're, we're trying to minimize the best we can, but whether it's one classroom that might need to go remote for a period of time or whether a bigger group of people. So we're really encouraging teachers to maintain their CSO and their School of D accounts so that.
So they are maintaining that infrastructure.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yes.
That is our expectation. And then as far as snow days go, last year there was kind of a special dispensation from the state to be able to do that. I believe we're still able to this year, but you need to use up your days before you can go to that model. It's not, you know, we can't like conserve the days or in a way. But yes, teachers, the expectation is that if at any point in time we needed to, you know, now whether the kids actually have their devices at home or, you know, but, but we should be prepared.
I'm actually finding that so many of the students know all about all those platforms because we actually handed out all the devices to all the students, six through 12. And what they retained was, I was actually very surprised. They knew how to get into ClassLink, they know how to use Schoology. And I think that they'll be ready too if they have to.
Their language acquisition skills are heightened quite so they get their digital data. They're just trying to keep up.
Yeah.
And I would say that once we get closer to that point where we have exhausted all those emergency days, we will make sure that the students are aware that they should be taking those devices home, especially if we see a storm brewing. Now, we can't always predict, but if we know we've used up all of our days, I think that's when we will make sure that they are taking them home on a daily basis.
Mike, is there the infrastructure still in place? We did wonderful, that's still working, we're still making, that's great.
And it's going at speed of light. Finished September already, we're looking forward to October. We've had five new hires.
And you pick up, speak up a little, please.
Sure. We've had five new hires at the elementary all at once. So that has been.
A challenge.
A challenge. Mary's doing a great job with the training. The girls are picking up quickly. Doing breakfast delivery to the classrooms. We've had 317, that was our highest day. Free COVID when the kids came through. We might have a 135 day. We thought that was great. So a little less choice on the meals going forward for lunch. We're a little concerned about supplies. We've already been told that certain things aren't coming. Got shorted seven cases of pizza today because there's no ingredients, there's no one to pass the truck and there's no one to drive the truck. So trying to buy as much as we can. And then you might look a little mundane because of that.
Are we still at the 100% free level?
Yes. And we transitioned into an SSO program, which is an option for us. So we are getting a higher reimbursement rate, over $4 a meal. Today we had a national, celebrated National Ice Cream Cone Day at the high school, tomorrow with the other two schools. So I do that on a grilled cheese day and hopefully the kids have come in to get their ice cream cone. And we did pretty good with that today. What's nice about this particular year is that we can encourage people to come in that have brought their food from home, to come in and grab like three more items, fruit, vegetable, milk, or a grain, a vegetable, and fruit, and we still get the same reimbursement than if they took the entire meal. So we're trying to encourage some kids to come in for that.
Across all three schools, we have to have the dividers on the table.
Yes, we have them.
Building principals, any issues with that? And you're not hearing anything from your employees within those cafeterias?
No, we have the barriers up in the kitchen and that's what they take care of. And all the aides take care of the ones that are on the table.
Good to see it's working. Unfortunately, you still, you still have to live in that world.
Yeah.
Well, it's close to the original intent of what those devices were. So that's a good, incrementally, you know.
The kids are good about respecting the fact that you can't touch everything, you know, what you're going to choose and we're trying to save. And unfortunately, we had put up a few signs on our line, please just use one bag of pre-sliced apple because I don't hope I can get any more. I want to make sure that everybody, whether it's the first kid or the last kid, gets.
It's a choice.
We can pretty much be assured though that you will have something.
Oh, yeah, they'll have something. And they have broccoli every Friday, which is their favorite. That's their favorite. USA broccoli. And I can't have anything outside of USA.
The supply issues that, are there additional resources we can tap into? Or is this something you're trying?
If we don't have, like the government food is getting delayed. So we just got noticed that some of our canned fruit that we were expecting beginning of October is now the end of October. So I will turn around and buy some more fresh fruit from the pilot program, fresh fruits and vegetables. But it's later intensive to try to get in fresh broccoli, clean it.
Yeah, sure, sure. Prep time, doesn't it?
But the kids here, that's a big vegetable for them. They'll like that. Yeah, so they're going to have to have more ramen.
Sharon, you have anything to add, Keith?
We're heavily into star testing. So we'll have that dated to you next month. And I'm working down the way you guys like it. We have our winners do the number of hours and minutes and questions that they answered. They did really well. I was really impressed with the 122 students that participated. We didn't have that many going into ninth grade that participated, but I was happy with the number that we did get, which I believe was nine, which is nine more than we had last year. Hopefully next year we can, there's a lot of interest in incoming fourth grade to the department program, so hopefully we can go down to the fourth grade. And the summer school was fantastic. I loved hearing, we did a survey this year after the summer school and some of the comments I loved hearing. I never knew math could be so much fun. I really enjoyed writing. And we added a new thing this year for social emotional learning and cooperative, cooperative skills to reinforce some behaviors because some of our kids had not been in school for so long, about 18 months. And that was one of some of the kids' favorite programs because they did a lot of activities that were team building and icebreakers. And I got to tell you, the teachers did a phenomenal job. We had a wonderful team.
That's great to hear. Thank you. Anything to say about people?
He's going to go with the.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Now we're down to the consent agenda. Part of the document here.
I would just like one item pulled, and that is the overtime memo. I think that's in the consent agenda.
Okay.
With that, I'm ready to go. Anybody else have, have any pullouts? Usually we announce the pullouts first.
Yes, varsity board of presidents.
Okay.
Yes, these items, put a vote on individually.
I want to just see if we can table the meeting minutes for August 17th. I just want to like get the please that one's updated for that.
Right, there was, part of it is missing sort of like, yes, we would like to table that for the next meeting for August 17th, meeting minutes.
But you're okay with the August 30th meeting minutes?
Yes.
So we will put the consent for the.
Yeah. Two items. Okay, so. Do I have a motion to accept the, to open this up on the consent agenda? Ed and Heather. So in regards to that, do we, are we in a discussion?
The consent agenda, the items we wouldn't have discussion.
Is there anything else we want to mention about anything here? No? Okay, minus those two items we discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
So now we'll pull out.
We have to pull out. Actually, we're going to let go, recognize some people that are here.
So we actually have two of our new hires here with us this evening. We have Jenna Cicado, who will be at the middle school. Jenna, if you could just. And in the back row there, we have Loretta, but she likes to go by Lolly Bartowski. And she'll be at the middle school. Thank you both for coming this evening. We appreciate you being here.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I just had a follow-up question on the overtime. And I brought this up in the audit committee meeting when we first talked about the overtime. And I guess I would like to bring it out that if we can find a way to get away from manual record keeping and manual timesheets. If, I know, I know the contracts might be a little complicated, but there's got to be something out there to get us away from manual timesheets. That was my only comment.
Okay. The business office would love that. We have to work through.
That would be, that would be wonderful if it could be tackled.
And, and do you feel that was a major component in the error?
I think it, it seemed to be alluded to that.
Yeah, it seemed to be related.
I think there were, there were certainly errors in understanding how the overtime was calculated and, and having the timesheets completed correctly. We did create new timesheets to try and make it clearer.
Right.
And the supervisors signed them and then I signed them as well. And then when the payroll is certified by the superintendent, he also gets a report of all of the overtime that's been done.
I think it's, I think it's good suggestion, I think we just need to be cautious of cost benefit analysis because some of those contracts are very hard to program.
Right.
That's one of the things, just sorry, that's one of the things when we're talking about new contracts is can we execute this? There's always lots of ideas as we're trying to break together the agreement of two parties. But I think one of the questions are, and everybody always wants to get to a handshake. Of course we do. But some of the complexity in those contracts, you know, very difficult. So some of those areas should be identified and we should discuss as we prepare for next round.
For next contract.
We got to smooth this out.
That's a very good point.
Because you may or may not get to automate it. And even so, with the complexity of the contract, it has to be executed. And we talked about that before. So it sounds like we got an area where there could be some improvements made, some efficiencies made. Even with best effort, there's going to be errors. So thank you.
This, this, that issue really was for the particular group of individuals in general.
So you don't expect it to be repeated?
I don't expect it to be repeated. It was a unique situation, place, scenario and move on back and forth on some of those items. And it happened. Taking corrective action on it, did?
Absolutely.
We're all set. Okay, in regards to the corrective action plan, overtime audit.
Yeah.
And Ed? Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Okay. Number four, right?
We're going back to number four, appointments. Or do we want to have any discussion?
Motion.
Mike. No other discussion on this, correct? Okay. All opposed, or, you know, all for this item?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
Six one. Okay. Assistant Superintendent.
And we have a couple of quick updates, although very important ones. As we know, the pandemic is still, still happening, still impacting what we do in buildings. As I mentioned at our last meeting, the state did mandate that we need to do weekly screening of all, all adults who are interacting with our building if they are unvaccinated. And vaccinated people can choose to be screened as well as part of the weekly screening. So we've been doing a lot of work the last few weeks collecting all of that data. We will be, well, the county will be supplying the tests and the people doing the testing. So they are actually, they just put out an RFP a couple of weeks ago. I believe that ended yesterday. So they will be getting us in contact with the essentially contractor, who will be a doctor's office, who will be doing the testing in the district. So I don't have a lot of logistics for how exactly that's going to look. But generally speaking, it'll be one day a week. They'll be sending the people to administer the tests. You know, we have a few other people that may not fit into the time period that, that the contractor does. So our, our health office nurses, like for instance, our night custodial staff or our substitute teachers, you know, people who wouldn't necessarily be here on a regular basis, they'll be handling that. Generally speaking, if you look at our, our numbers overall, we're about between 68 and 70% vaccinated as a district, which is, which is pretty good. Some, some units are higher than others, but, but overall, we are pretty right around where the county is in general. Students also can opt into weekly screening. And truthfully, I haven't looked at that last, this week, but when I looked at it last week, there was about 60 students across the district whose parents were opting them into the, the weekly screening. There is a lot of logistics that go into putting all of this together. So, you know, I think it's the right move. I think it's important for trying to keep our kids safe. But we also have to think about not only doing the testing, but if we're doing more testing, there's a good chance that we're then going to have more positives as well. So, you know, what the impact then might be in the buildings. I'm sure many of you have heard, we have had a few isolated positive cases in the buildings. You were, I wanted to review some of the quarantining and contact tracing rules because there has been some confusion about that. Again, you know, all of the guidance has prioritized in five days of impersonal learning to the best of 10 and prioritize students being in school. In the buildings, we're in pretty good shape as far as we're always wearing masks in, in all, all areas except for during lunch. And we've tried to minimize the amount that students are unmasked during lunch. But that is, that is, that is an area that we really have, you know, when there's a positive, we've tried to make it so you're really only around a couple of kids so that we can really pinpoint the number of students that, that might be involved in that quarantining. The buses are also an issue, as we said from the beginning. In order to fully go back to buses, there's no way that we can do three-foot social distancing. But they are masked the whole time and the seats are very high on a bus. And so really, it's the person sitting next to them on the bus and potentially a person across the aisle from them that could be impacted by the quarantining. If a student is vaccinated, so for our students who are ages 12 and up who may be vaccinated, or they're adults who aren't vaccinated, if they're exposed, they do not need to quarantine. But they are, they do need to monitor their symptoms and they should get a test within three to five days just to ensure that they're not, they're not positive. You know, the harder, part of this is for our students, our young students who cannot be vaccinated. And so, you know, pretty much any time that we have a positive case at the elementary and parts of the sixth grade, there's going to be some quarantine that's going to happen. But again, from the internal part of the building, we really minimize that the best we can. The area that has been some concern across the district is the situations where we've had a positive and it's been a sports team because we do not need to wear masks when we are outside. But what, what the guidance didn't make super clear at the very beginning, and we're now understanding a little better, is they still need to be six-foot socially distanced when they're outside unmasked. And if they're in proximity with each other for more than 15 minutes and, and they're unvaccinated, then they still need to quarantine. And I think we've made that. And I think we've made that clear to our coaches. And of course, we've had a couple of situations now that it's more out there in the community. But I do think if, if I had understood this better, if we had understood it better, we probably could have been clear. We're talking with coaches about perhaps some other mitigation strategies, like keeping kids six feet apart on the sidelines during a competition, potentially wearing masks when they're on the sidelines. You know, at least when they're on the field of play. Generally speaking, they're moving around a lot. So they're not maybe hitting that 15-minute threshold. But I do think there are some things we can do on the sidelines to try to, you know, again, try to minimize the amount of people who are quarantined, but still try to keep the kids as safe as we can.
We're doing great.
So far, we're doing well. I, I really think the next two weeks is going to be a good indicator of what the internal, so far, any cases we've had seem to be from outside stuff rather than from internal transmission. You know, we can't really know that for sure. But yeah, I think the next couple of weeks will be a better, a better indicator.
The unvaccinated tested, is that random, or that's every week they're gonna get tested?
Every adult, and that's every, that's subs, that's any contractors that we might have that have regular interaction within the building. So it's any adult that is not vaccinated must be tested once a week. And then for students, it's only those students who opt in, whose parents contract to be tested. And again, like I said, our vaccinated adults can also choose to be part of that weekly testing if they would like. And we do have some who have chosen that option.
What would they, what would a typical, typical day of testing, I mean, what would that look like?
That's what I'm not sure about yet, because we're still waiting for our contractor. In my head, what I want it to look like is that the county will send a person for each building to do the testing at the beginning of the day, kind of as people are coming into work. Because it's a really, it's quick.
It is.
You know, the part where they're just, you know, sticking the thing.
Ideally prior to the beginning of the activity.
Yes, ideally prior to the beginning of the active day, or at least only impacting the first few minutes of the day. I don't anticipate, I'm not looking for it to be the whole morning where we've got to do coverage and all of that. But it looks like, my, my most recent, and we keep getting updates, but my most recent number is 111 staff across the district. And so again, the areas that are a little bit more concerned is our bus drivers. You know, they won't be able to be tested during that coming-in time when they're out on the road. So hopefully, they'll be able, you know, whoever the county sends can be here doing the thing. And when they're done here, then they can go to the bus garage and have it done there. And then, like I said, our own staff will take care of the substitutes who may not be in on the day that is the county day. And then the health office staff would, would help us with that as well as the, the night custodians or any coaches that aren't our own people that we might need to test, that get it done at that time as well. So, you know, we have, we have quite a few staff who have started the vaccination process. They still have to be tested until they're completely done with the entire, with the entire regimen. And then, you know, the other good news that was in, I'm sure many of you saw in the headlines this week, Pfizer has said that their, their shot is, is highly effective for, for students ages five to 11. So we're hoping that that FDA approval will happen by the end of October, possibly early November. And, and it's, yes, it's a little earlier timeline. You know, going into the school year, we were thinking more like December, January. So I think that'll have a huge impact if that can come through. So, you know, I just wanted to give you a little update of what's kind of happening with all of that. We had questions last week, or last meeting about the website. Please take a moment to look at the equity and inclusion aspect of the website. That's all completely updated now. It has a timeline of all the events that we've done. It has any presentations that we've done. And we'll continue with that as we move forward. Our first in-person meeting of the big committee is next Tuesday night. We are going to discuss there, the expansion, as I mentioned last week, of the, of the committee, and kind of talk through where the committee might want to expand some of that. And then the website as a whole, Mr. Preier and I met with our PR representative from Ulster Bowses. And we're looking at possibly having Ulster Bowses come in and actually redesign our entire website. So probably go with a new platform. The platform is pretty outdated. Anyone who's worked on it, it's pretty funky to put things into it and take things out of it. So our plan is to redesign it so that it, it's just more user-friendly across the board. So that work is happening. We're going to talk, you know, we'll be talking more about the, the school improvement plans later in the meeting. But as part of that, we will be continuing our panorama surveys with students, parents, and faculty members. We did the first one last February. We're looking at administering those three times a year this year. So we'll be doing our first one in October, the second one in January, February, timeframe, and then the last one in May. And, you know, our, our goal with that is a big focus on the school improvement and making sure, especially in this year after last year, help making sure that students are feeling welcomed and comfortable and recognized in the buildings. Getting a feeling from how parents feel and connecting with the school. So, so we'll be doing that. Just upon mention of those will be coming up. And that's all I have for right now.
Sarah, I don't know if this question, you can answer it, or Bill can answer it, but have the elections been held for our student reps yet?
Not yet.
Student rep.
We're pulling together probably within, we have class meetings at the end of this week, and we're gonna explain how it's gonna, they're gonna vote on, through Schoology. And it should be by the end of next week.
All right.
So by the, by next meeting, we should have somebody.
Set that.
You have one, two, share?
I thought we agreed last time that was gonna be one, right?
We talked about, we did it before, agree on one?
Yes.
Could we have an, do we have an alternate? Could we have an alternate?
Let's have a discussion.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I mean. Well, I think, personally, the one thing I did enjoy about two is the ten divided conqueror, so who was inactive agent to find out the point in the elementary school. And then, you know, typically, my experience is that when, we were just getting the high school's point of view when it was just one representative. But when we put it to two representatives, we were seeing more of a district-wide representation. And I, I appreciated that.
I will say there are two that I know that are running. I like having an alternate. And senior's, they get busy.
I, I'd rather she just wanted her time, you know.
That's fine.
No.
They could work it out.
So, do you want two reps in alternate meetings? Or one rep with an alternate who could come when the, the official person couldn't come?
I think the one and alternate.
What was the issue about one? I don't, I don't really recall that conversation too much. I apologize.
No, I think because last year there was two because of the two cohorts.
Right.
But there wasn't an issue, there wasn't an issue with having one.
But, it is a serious position.
Absolutely.
It is, there is responsibility to it. I just want to make sure we have somebody here, whatever combination we agree to.
Well, I think it's good for the board to decide what they want to have. Because then we can structure it in whatever, I mean, this, I mean, I, I guess part of it is this year we do have two who are interested, so that that would probably work out. Some years, we might not have that because it's some years it's difficult.
Recording, but it's there.
And we might need to look at the board.
Because one, if we can have two and have one of them represent, one of them actively representing the elementary school to the middle school, and then the other representing the high school, I, you know, I think that might work out best. The idea is to give us, one, I think we have to reach out to the other schools. It just only makes the position that much more valuable to them and their experience. And I think it's a value to us to.
Get a little crowded.
I remember, like, Michael managed the student government. And I felt like the representatives had, had done a nice job. And there was one, it was Kristin did before, that she was getting everyone's, all the buildings. So I just didn't, like, let, let the high school kind of manage that. And then we just have representatives, like, we're trying to get too much into the weeds.
We just want to make sure there's a student, one student rep participates at each board meeting. If there's more than that, let them split it up, or, you know.
Responsibility to keep, keep your portfolio.
Well, yeah, without Michael managing, I'm not sure I'm gonna tell. I wanted to get to a base of responsibilities, but that responsibility seems a little cruel, actually.
All right, well, the only discussion is, who would like just one student rep? And who would like to have two, one as an alternate? One student rep?
Oh, one student rep. I, I'm with Camille.
Yes, if, if we're gonna, I, I wouldn't do an alternate. If we're gonna do one student rep before you tell, I don't think an alternate is fair to the person.
We're covering one?
Great. Great. Thank you, Matt.
No problem.
We should go back.
So it has been a busy first two weeks today, Mark. Two weeks exactly, as Mr. Dragan said before. You saw some of his numbers coming in. What we saw seemed a little higher than this year's normal. A lot of students moving or coming, they probably moved earlier, but coming to us the first week of school. So the past two weeks has been a lot of chasing. So chasing papers for my department specifically. Students come in, sometimes we don't even register if they have an IEP. So we're chasing departments to try to find out if they have an IEP, what it might look like, because it takes time to transfer electronically. And we try to get them placed as soon as possible, and we're trying to match it. So we're looking at the secondary level, even at the elementary, trying to put them in the right program, in the right class. So we don't want to place them and then two days later have to move them. So we're trying to find the balance of chasing down the other districts to get what we need, but getting them in as quickly as possible. So Ms. Beazad in our department has been great. She's been making phone calls nonstop, trying to make sure we get everything we need. But it has been a very hectic two weeks of getting student paperwork in. I am the district representative for a mental health committee that Dr. Corey sort of orchestrated over the summer. And this was in response to Ulster County Department of Health getting some grants and looking to partner more with school districts. So we're at the very early beginning phases of trying to determine what that looks like. So we had a group meeting, and then I had an individual meeting with some of the representatives. And they're trying to determine what they're gonna provide and finding out what the districts need specifically. So it's very early on, but they do have programs. And then they partner with outside agencies as well. So we're hoping to build some more connections with the county and get some supports for them. Some of the things we're talking about is some after-school programs, some in-day trainings, some trainings for our staff, so that it can be turnkey, where we don't need them to keep coming in for very specific programs, the older levels. Some of them are based on drug abuse, counseling, wellness. So it's kind of a little bit of everything involving mental health. But it's nice to see that's partnership with the county, and we're excited for it. For homeschool, our numbers are higher this year than they were last year. Last year, we ended at 58. This year, we're currently at 63. That number is shifting a little bit. We do have some students making some decisions over the last week that they do want to homeschool or not homeschool. I think not having a virtual option, we did an increase in number. Prior to COVID, we were in the high twenties usually, higher school year.
It was a, yeah.
So some of those families can, have continued, but we've definitely seen an increase in some of the other ones. And the last thing, each year, we have to, as part of the state performance plan, we have something that we have to complete. Sometimes it's involved around CPSE meetings, making sure we're doing evaluations on time. Sometimes it looks at transition services for older students. This year, we had to do a survey on parental involvement. And typically in the past, after we'd have the family in for a CSE meeting, we'd ask them to complete the survey right after. So having all virtual CSE meetings made it a lot more difficult to make that happen. That paired with a lot of surveys throughout the year this year. We didn't want to bombard parents with surveys because we didn't think we'd get a good turnout. So we waited until the summer to do it. And we had to get at least 72 to hit the mark out of our 285 that we were putting out. And we had 165 returned. And a big shout out to Michelle McGrath, who helped orchestrate that. So we use a staff member that's a confidential piece to it, so they're not supposed to share any information that they get back with our department. And we'll get those results at some point on the feedback from parental involvement. But I was very happy to see the, the total numbers group of surveys that we got returned.
Thank you. Good support.
What are they, do business?
I sent you a quiet all night. It was down on the bottom.
Down on the bottom.
It's okay. So I, in my email that I sent at the end of the week, I mentioned to the board, but I think it's good for the community to know that I attended the SUNY New Pauls Benjamin Center celebratory meeting of Assemblyman Cahill's office. And that is for the science lab initiative. We were not part of the first two rounds, but we are slated to be part of the next round. There's not a lot more detail for me to provide. I did give you a copy of the program that was handed out and some exciting things happening in those first two rounds. So we're, we're really looking forward to seeing what, what opportunities we have with that. Now, it is also fair, I think, to mention that we are a very small portion of Assemblyman Cahill's, um, resources. So we don't know what our funding level will be at this point. But as soon as I know that, I'll make sure that that is squashed up to the board in a future report. Rotary, as you know, the Rotary does some great things for our school district. They will be hosting a, a benefit for the Highland Scholarship Fund, Comedy Night at Novellas on Friday night, October 15th. The doors open at seven. The show is at 9:00 PM. It's a 21 and older show. But the proceeds from that evening go to help fund the scholarships for the high schools. So if you want to take part in that, or if you, anyone would like to make a donation to the Rotary on behalf of that scholarship fund, they would be more than happy to accept that donation.
Joe, were you officially there as a Rotaryian this week?
I was not. And it's no fault of the Rotary's. The, Steve Lawback was on vacation, so we were not able to connect to have that meeting prior. You have to have a, a formal meeting to go through what the expectations are. I will be meeting with him and a member of the Bruderhoff, who will be inducted at the same time. And the Bruderhoff member could not join us for a meeting in early September. So we're hoping that's in the next, it's not gonna be tomorrow. I think I sent you that email so that you did not show up. I didn't want you showing up and expecting something. But I appreciate your support.
Someone's a cheer for you, what?
Also, I will be participating with the Rotary in the Alzheimer's Walk on behalf, in honor of Linda Ockmody. I'm happy to say that they're only expecting us to raise per member, like, $100 to $200. I, I've already raised $790 on behalf of Mrs. Ockmody, so.
Those clink talents have come in handy, eh?
What's that?
Said your clink talents have come in.
Well, the difference between that is the clink thing, I did not advertise on my, I just came here and, and wanted all of you to do that. But if anyone would like to donate to that, I, I left you the link on my email that I sent on Friday. Also, please make plans for the, to recognize our 2021 honorees, Darlene Klavcek, Koby Simpson, and Scott McFarland on Wednesday night, November 3rd. This is part of the Educational Foundation's recognition of the Highland Hall of Fame. You notice that there's some posters in the back. We have the poster for this current year's induction group in my office. It will be hung, it will be at that event and then hung afterward. Flyers and social media posts will be coming out soon. Tickets can be ordered from Luke Sakunda, and his phone number will be on that flyer. $25 per person includes dinner and dessert. I think it would be a nice night if everyone cooks some at-home grocery, uh, Highland Hall of Famers. Also, just looking ahead to 2022, the Snowball will be on February 26th. That's a Saturday evening from 6:00 to 10:00 at Novellas. And that will be $40 per person. And then we will be recognizing the 2022 inductees. Stay tuned because that information will be coming out shortly. Board members also should, you're receiving an invitation to the October 14th Ulster County School Boards Association meeting. If you're interested in attending that, please reach out to Shyla Beck, and her information is in the email that I sent you. And let's see, Sue.
Yes, I.
The New York State School Boards Association went virtual, so.
I heard.
Carly went to put your registration in on Monday, and it went virtual, so.
Yeah, I just, I heard that last night.
Yeah, are you still interested in attending that? And you can get back to me.
From what I understand, from what I understand, it's, it may, the law conference may not be held.
I'm hearing that as well.
Yeah, so.
We can, we can keep, we can keep our finger on the pulse of that.
That was really surprising.
And then the NISCUS Conference, which is the New York State Council of School Superintendents, they're holding their annual convention this weekend. And the Central Office Administrators will be in attendance for that. So that one's still in person in Saratoga, so I'll be heading up there this weekend. And I think that's, oh, just on a final note, I was able to attend some of the games on Friday evening. It was incredible to see the number of folks come out to support our athletic teams. I was able to be there for boys soccer and for the football game. Large participation, and it's important that people realize that we still want people to be socially distanced as much as possible, and we want them to come out and have fun. They were having a blast that night. And then just a nice little perk this year is that we're not charging for any home events. So a lot of happy faces on Friday night coming into the football game. And I will say that I wasn't able to stay for the whole game because I had a wedding to go to up in Massachusetts. So I left shortly after the first quarter. But I did hear the Katzi's name and Adoma's name a couple of times over the wall call, so. And then I was very pleased when I got to Massachusetts, and I looked at my text that we had won the game, so.
Off to a good start.
So it was nice to see everybody out there.
I saw them at the game, so. Just as to add to that, really, it's probably a good point in time, I'm gonna step a little bit out of line here. There was huge crowds of students, a lot of middle schoolers there. So it's good to see the kids out on a night, enjoying the game, a lot of high schoolers. And I imagine a fair amount of elementary school students at that stuff. These kids were, you're right, very energetic. It was a big crowd. Parking lot was full. Unfortunately, it saw a lot of students out in the parking lot also. So, you know, you never know, you're out there, you know? You can't see them, it's a little dark out there, cars coming in and out. I think we might have to look at a few options as far as maybe having somebody ride around on a car, you know, one of the golf carts we have, circle through the parking lots. I did not see a police presence there. I know we normally have a police officer.
I did see.
There was one there.
Yeah, there was one there.
Yeah, I did see one.
Where did we have somebody there?
I did not see the individual, but thank you for that. And, you know, that's good, but, you know, it's nice to see everybody out there having a good time. They've been cooped up for so long, with a chance to enjoy the evening, and it was a nice night. To, I might as well talk about it now. Unfortunately, that same Friday night, where we really enjoyed an event at a school, in pretty quick order, there was a stabbing at Arlington High School where, you know, somebody, a student of Arlington High School died from those injuries. There, let's see, Hyde Park, about an hour after that, Hyde Park School District had a rather large fight out in the parking lot. And that was broken up by multiple agencies of police officers. And to cap it off, there was a game at Deed Stadium in Kingston that same night, where there was another large fight and unruly fans. And they were able to disperse most of them, except for one individual that decided that they weren't gonna leave and had to be, you know, escorted out of there. So I'm not sure what's going on, but we have to keep an eye on these big events, where students are getting together, some because that is their district. Couple of these events sound like they might have been attended by non-students and students from not even the district that the two teams, you know, the two teams that were at that contest. So I'm just raising our level of awareness, and maybe we need to put a couple other measures in place at our house, because we can only take care of what we do here. So we should start thinking about some options for these events and how we can crowd control.
So you'd like to see additional security, does that come here?
Possibly, yes. Utilize, if we can, our townwide police force. Maybe our three security people, you know, obviously we can't mandate anything. Maybe they will come in.
Might have to pay for it.
Right, and again, money well spent, you know? So we gotta start thinking about a few things like this. And maybe with the activities that are happening at some of these other locations, I don't, you know, maybe it's time to maybe reserve the SRO program, bring an SRO officer back into our, into our building. So something to think about, okay?
Yeah, just with regards to athletic events, is there, does the sector inquire a certain level of security at these events, or is it up to the district as to what we provide?
The visiting team, if you know you're gonna have a crowd, should be having their own chaperones for their side. The other day, we had three chaperones working outside the gate, outside the field. It was myself, and we also had another one on the field who happened to be doing the chains. Based on what we had in the past, that would be sufficient. But I did call the police at the beginning of the fourth quarter and ask if they can come at the end, to make sure the parking lot was cleared. The next three home games, we do have for varsity football. I've already talked to the police department, there may be two police officers there from the beginning to the end. Will they be additional, no, we have to pay for those individuals to be on site? We will ask people if they're willing to work.
The police.
The police officers. Oh, the police officers? There'll be two police officers.
Is there?
We will pay, we will have to pay for those officers. That's not part of their, in the past, in the past, we would pay them directly as a person, maybe off duty. We cannot do that anymore. They'll be paid while they're on duty, okay? And we would pay for that. So the police officer that was on site Friday night was only there for the last quarter. He wasn't there, so. Right, they were called to ask. My dad, I left at halftime, that's what it is. They were called to ask to come, and there was no charge or anything for them.
It's more of a request for public safety at the end of the game. But in the future, he's saying he will have them there, and that's a paid service.
That's, that's a good step. So again, we just go, we all have to be careful. Hopefully, more and more parents will not only just rock the kids off, but attend the game also. Any event we have. Any other comments? Thank you. Okay. Board Education, new business. District-wide emergency response plan. Public hearing will take place to review the proposed Highland Central School District, district-wide emergency response plan at the October 12th Board Education meeting.
So this is standard, you should have received, not only the district-wide plan, it's the public plan, so that's a little bit generic. You also, though, should have received the building-level plans. Those are much more specific. They have staff and, you know, exactly what would happen in the case of kind of emergencies. No significant changes from previous years, it's mostly just updating. People, right, that's what always makes it, you know, takes a little bit longer just to get all of our folks in place.
No major changes.
No, and you should have received those already.
Yeah, for sure.
Yep.
Okay, SECP, DECP approval. Be resolved that the Board Education Fund, or Foundation of the Superintendent, approves the School Comprehensive Education Plan SECP for the elementary school and middle school, as well as the District Comprehensive Improvement Plan, DECP, for the 2021, 2022 school year, as presented to the Board at this meeting. Kind of a motion, Sue? Need discussion on this?
Thank you for all your work on this.
So just to give a little bit of background, this is a continuation of the school improvement directive that we were given by New York State two years ago. Right now, it's not possible to get off of the list because of the way that state assessments have run the last couple of years, so this is a continuation. You know, we really looked at what we were able to do last year, and we're building upon that work this year with a strong emphasis on equity across the board, as well as in, of course, math and ELA achievement. And we've been talking about quite a few of the aspects of it throughout the year, building a whole lot of that. So if you have any specific questions, you have good answer questions.
Any more questions? So, thank you. Okay, donation accepted.
You need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. We've already got a motion by school.
Charles in a hurry.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Anybody to vote? Donation acceptance. Be resolved that the Board Education, on a recommendation of the Superintendent, hereby accepts a donation from Aurora Night Accessories for the total amount of $200 for the purpose of the 2021 summer online math program. Motion, please, Ed and Heather. Any discussion on this?
So just FYI, this is for the prizes for the summer math online initiative that Karen has run the last couple of years, and it's very jutly donated by her company.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, all in favor? Hi. Anybody to vote? Okay, old business. Captain Project Education, Joe?
So as we are moving into the next stage, we brought Bernie Donigan in tonight to give us some details on what our financial forecast looks like. The next part of this would be the building survey that we should be receiving within the next week or so. So we'll make sure that you get that at the October 12th meeting. And we will be formulating from that building survey conversation points for the next meeting with the hopes of coming to some conclusions so that we can get a district survey out to the community. So that's, the biggest part was getting Bernie Donigan's office in. And he met with us the other day, they met with us the other day on Zoom, and then came down a little early today to go over some things in the business office with Victoria. And the outlook looks pretty bright. But we want to stay on track for that if we are moving forward, but that may, that may vote of having everything together by, I would say, by early February so that we have time to discuss it. And if we can get it by January, that would even be better because it would give us some time to make some calculated decisions so that we can have that plan ready to go by the beginning of May, so that we meet those deadlines. We asked them to give us that timeline that you saw, that he outlined at the end of the meeting, so that we have some target points, so that we know what we have to do and when we have to get those in place. So by next meeting, the building condition survey with then a timeline of what our scope of work is going to be during the next few months. Looking forward, we have two meetings in October. One scheduled for each of the months of November, December, January, and February. I already spoke to Mr. Tom Miller, when I say Miller, I sometimes think of the other Miller, about we may need an additional meeting or two sometime in the winter as we're going through this process, just so that we do our due diligence and get all of the feedback, and we're able to work through all of those, you know? We'll play that by ear as we get to those points.
At some point in time, I think we have to have the discussion either with the support services and then the entire board as far as a design professional moving forward and help facilitate as we move forward.
Well, I'm sort of hoping that we can get that building condition survey in the next week or two, and we can have a meeting prior to the October 12th meeting. Peter Miller just answered the questions that I've been asking for of the folks that are doing the building condition survey. I've been asking since the beginning of September as to when he was gonna receive those questions. He just received them, and he just answered them. So those were all sent back, I believe, yesterday. Just today, the days are long.
Tomorrow, yesterday.
It's almost, now it's not almost just. So hopefully, they can move pretty quickly on that. And if we don't see something in the next day or two, then we can, we can push that.
Is there any updates on the current project?
The what?
Is there any updates on the current capital budget? I don't know, you think so.
I think we're not building cars now, too.
You haven't gotten there yet.
Maybe mini buses.
Yeah, my bus.
They are, they are. You're doing a good job.
All right. Miscellaneous, any correspondence for the board or any individual board member that they might want to pick for that? Anything?
I just have, just a follow-up on the athletic trainer. That's kind of where we're at with the athletic trainer.
Do you want to talk about the RFP?
So we put together an RFP. We searched for all family or pediatric practices locally. We went over the RFP with our central administration and our high school nurse for the school physician so that she could, you know, I'm not familiar with the practice here in Highland yet in terms of scheduling for student physicals, athletic physicals. So she went over it with us and provided her input. We sent it out last week. We faxed it to each person on the list, as well as physically mailed it. And I believe we gave them a two-week turnaround so that we could get it in place as quickly as possible so that we can then have that supervising physician for the athletic trainer.
Thank you.
Okay, nobody, correspondence, anybody wants to? Ulster County School Board Association's true and parent portal.
I don't know what the portal is, but I know what the panel is, so.
That's what it was titled.
Okay, so the, at that October 14th Ulster County School Boards Association meeting, they are asking for each district to find a parent and a student who would be interested to come and serve on a panel to talk about their experiences during remote learning or during the pandemic, whether the hybrid learning. It can be positive experiences, not so positive experiences, but as sort of a roundtable of members of the Ulster County community. So I sent that out to principals the other day, and we will have follow-up conversations tomorrow at Cabinet about trying to identify a parent and a student that would be willing to go to that meeting and serve on that panel. And then any of you that are interested in attending that, please just reach out to Shyla Beck so that she knows to expect you.
Public comments. We referenced the financial report you got earlier. Is there a project that the?
the district is considering at the moment or a set of projects that the district is
I think it's fair to say that we're at the very beginning of that, trying to find out where we are, where, when our debt drops off so that we know how to move forward with a building project. There's been conversations for a while now that we knew that the debt would be dropping off so that we're looking for the possibility of a May vote moving forward, but nothing's been.
No particular project?
No particular items have been solidified yet. We're really at the beginning stages of that. But during that, that survey process, we will be surveying the community. The board members were asked two weeks ago to provide some insight as to things that they thought were important. I think our building condition survey will speak to things that we need to address. Administration will also have conversations and we've had some preliminary conversations, but nothing, nothing formalized to present at this point.
At our last meeting, we asked the, the community at large if they had suggestions or, or the things that they found that they'd like to see to welcome their input.
Do you think a survey will be sent out and like a piece of paper that go out?
Yes, yes.
It'll probably be digital, I guess.
I'm sorry?
It'll probably be digital rather than a piece of paper, but yeah.
Well, we've already received a good number, I think, several communications from the community at large. So very nice to see.
You're welcome. Any other public comments? Posted in the view? All in favor?
Hi.